Good evening. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting taking place at North Andover Town Hall on September 17th, 2024. We will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes for June 11th, 2024?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. First up, we have, it's listed as a continued public hearing for 476 Johnson Street. It is actually the first hearing we are having for this. We had postponed last month's meeting. So can the applicant or representative for 476 Johnson Street?
My first time doing this, so.
Okay. I'm gonna have you stand right there for a moment. We're gonna read in the legal notice and then you can give us a heads up of what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Tuesday, August 20th.
September 17th.
September 17th, 2024, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Benjamin Brown, care of Corey Keefe and Claire Liebman. For property at 476 Johnson Street, map 38, parcel 61, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3(c) yards setbacks. Projections into rear yards. Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements. For one rear setback in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a 20-foot-by-16-foot deck. Specifically, applicant has requested a rear setback needing a relief variance of 11.7 feet. The rear setback proposed is 14.7 feet plus allowed projection of four feet, and the rear setback required per table 2 is 30 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire Chair.
Laura, yours.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ben. I'm here on behalf of Corey and Claire. Recently, new homeowners to the town of North Andover, not the exact closing date, but about eight months ago, they bought a home out here. The gentleman who sold it, the neighbor, who's aware of all this and he's okay with it, owns all the land around the property. They weren't aware of the setbacks. They're their first-time home buyer, so they bought the home. I go to submit the permit. They get the denial letter claiming the setback requirements that you just said. I talked to the neighbor. He basically divided his land to sell him just the house. So he sold the setback at 30.1. That's fine. He wanted to sell as much land as, little as land as possible. But they really wanted a deck. So the beautiful thing about this property is there's no other houses around it. It's all just his open land, open grassland. So it's not protruding on another, on another building. No neighbors can see it because it's in the back of the house. And it's not, you know, it's not, it's not intruding on why the zoning laws exist in the first place, right? It's not crowding another building. It's not close to a school. It's not near a playground. Nobody can even see it unless you were behind the home, which isn't a public way. No, you know, it could be built and nobody would be, would even know it's there. So this young family just bought a house in North Andover. They just want a back deck. The minimum relief we could do within a decent size, like I said, is 14.7. So that's where we're at, and I'm just a friend of the family. And also building the deck, and they're just, they wanted me to come here and see what I could do, so.
Lucky friends. So there's no deck there. I'm assuming it had been demoed.
There wasn't one existing. Just an old farmhouse. She's home pregnant with a, pregnant and with a little one, so she apologized for not coming.
As long as you're here.
That's why you're here.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
What I don't think I noticed, but did the, the farmland, the butters behind, do they have any opinions about it?
He's okay.
He's okay?
Chad, the owner, he's been in the town for as long as generations. His house is on the street next to him, but then all his, I'm sorry, all his grassland. It's not even farmland. It's not livestock. It's just grass. You know, I know because he mows it for about 10 hours a day. But I asked him, and that was the one person I really cared about, and he's been great throughout the whole process.
So he, he's the owner to the left if you're facing the house?
And also the one who sold him the property.
Right.
Oh, he's the seller as well.
He's the one who divided up the land to sell the house.
Okay.
So he owns those barns in the back?
Yep, correct.
Which really, really what, what impede is that barn's really not the grasses. Grass lots are off to the side.
Yeah, that barn, I believe, is not even there if you draw. I think he was taking it down. It was all, it wasn't habitable or anything.
Yeah, right.
Jen, we haven't gotten anything on this, right? Okay. Any questions?
And the dimensions of the deck don't get too close to the road that goes back to the barns.
It's completely in the rear.
Okay.
Yep. So there's not, I mean, he has a little, little like golf cart going through some of his grass, but yeah, no, he's totally fine. I think they were talking about tearing it out and putting grass anyway, between the two of them.
Gotcha. Because they got rid of the barns that.
Yeah, yeah. That was all completely rotted with it. He was tearing down when I was there. I just recently did a kitchen for him, so I'm familiar with the project.
Gotcha. It's funny, I drive by this house numerous times a day. I don't think I've ever actually seen them mowing, but the grass is always kind.
Yeah.
Is that the Calzetta Farm?
Yeah.
Yes, yep, exactly, yeah.
In front of the sergeant. The sergeant at lunch school. Her kids will have a very short commute to school. Okay. Any further questions?
Pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone from the public for this 476 Johnson Street? Okay. And we still haven't got anything? Okay. So I have, so essentially what happens now? Board has no questions. There's no comments from the public. We would close the meeting, take a vote. If it's for, you have two weeks for me to give you the decision, signed decision. If it's against, then you have appeal periods to appeal.
Okay.
So if there's nothing further you want to add, and there's no questions from the board, I can close.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got.
I move that we close the public comment.
Can I have a second? Hi. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion needed?
Not for me. I'm good.
I'm okay with it.
I liked the little floating hexagon that you drew that shows the direction boards over the framing. It's pretty cool. I like that.
Wait, what did I miss?
Engineers, creative.
On the, on the sketch. The one after the aerial shot. Or two after that. It just shows like mainly the frame, but then in this little hexagon, it shows which way the decking boards would run. It was just neat, stylistic.
I appreciate you for pointing that out.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if there's no discussion needed, can we have a motion?
I move to approve a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3(c) yards setbacks. Projections into rear yards. Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements. For one rear setback in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a 20-foot-by-16-foot deck. Specifically, applicant has requested a rear setback needing a relief variance of 11.7 feet. The rear setback proposed is 14.7 feet plus allowed projection of four feet, and the rear setback required per table 2 is 30 feet. Also, including plans by Andover Consultants Inc. dated May 17th, 2024. Titled Plot Plan Number 476 Johnson Street. And a set of plans by Build &amp; Recon Services dated June 14th, 2024. Titled 476, 476 Johnson Street New Deck Structure, Consisting of Six Sheets.
Okay. James?
Aye.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Aye. Michael?
Aye.
I'm also an aye.
Aye.
Laura? So give me two weeks to get you a decision.
Okay.
And then you'll be good to go.
Was that, was that the decision?
That was the decision. You got it.
The written decision.
That's all I needed. All right.
Well, don't start work.
No, I got it.
Tell you get the paper.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Building permit.
All right. Up next is 68 Belmont Street, which is also being listed as a continued public hearing. But again, we had canceled last month's meeting, so this is the first time.
So I read it as September 17th?
Yes, please.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Joseph.
Sianciola.
Sianciola, thank you. For, for property at 6 to 8 Belmont Street, map 18, parcel 28, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws. Section 195-4.3n3. The conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than five residential units. In accordance with section 195-10.7 of this bylaw and subsection n4 of this section of the R4 zoning district. For the purpose of converting the existing third-floor attic space into a new apartment unit. Specifically, applicant has requested conversion of the existing two-family structure to a three-family structure in the R4 zoning district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So can you just tell us what's going on and what you're looking for?
So yeah, well, this too is my first time here, so if you have any.
We go easy.
It's currently a two-family that I'm trying to convert the attic into a legal three-family. For my daughter and I. It's gonna be a two, well, I'm looking to establish a two-bedroom dwelling on the third floor. There will be an exterior staircase that I will be looking to put in to increase my square footage into that area. Don't believe that I am impeding on any setbacks because of the size of my lot. But if you guys take a look, I'm not 100% certain on that.
Well, I can tell you, so what you're here for today is just to be allowed to turn the two-family into a three-family.
Yeah.
Presumably, Mr. Hutchins would have let you know if there was other grounds for rejection of the.
Yeah, so he, having spoken to him, he said that he does not foresee any issues with the layout that I have.
We have a big lot.
Yes.
You have a big lot where you're looking to put this exterior kind of like stair, enclosed stair?
Within the property, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You're not changing anything exterior?
With the exception of that staircase.
In terms of you're not raising, you're not raising the roof, you're not doing dormers?
Not adding to the height of the building or any floors or anything?
No, I'm not exceeding the height that's actually on the plans. I believe it's 30, I think I'm 32 feet.
I think the plans do show you, you're gonna rip the roof off and reframe the roof?
Yes.
Yeah, so he's taking the roof off and he's gonna add another level.
Yeah, but he's only changing the pitch. He's not changing the height of the.
He's putting, he's putting walls up and changing the roof.
Right, but.
But the peak height will be the same.
The peak height will be the same.
Yeah, I'm within the, I believe it's 38 feet.
35.
35. I'm within that.
And Paul definitely told us if it was gonna be too tall.
I'm 33 feet.
My one question was about that, that peak change. It's really shallow, and we're in New England where we get sometimes snow, not the last couple of years, but we do get sometimes snow. Did the builders or engineers that you talked with have any ideas about what the snow load could do to the roof?
Well, this is all within the snow loads required within New England, but if you guys have an issue with the peak. Like I said, I have another two feet that I can adjust the peak for. That's not an issue for me.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure it's our job to play architect to that level.
Yeah, no, I mean, well, this was designed with snow loads, with the New England weather in mind, so.
You gotta comply with code.
Yeah, it's gonna, correct.
We have flat roofs in New England, too.
Yeah.
I've shoveled some of those for people. It's really not fun. It's scary.
You're looking to, for that. Any other questions from the board?
So you're adding the parking in back. There seems to be a lot of parking over, around the garage already.
Yeah, that's, that's still up in the air. I don't, I honestly, I don't think that I'm gonna alter the current, I don't know if anybody drove by the house. But you can see on the drawings, I don't think I'm gonna alter the current layout for parking. I'm gonna see if I can get away with not having to put that parking on the backside of the existing house right now, just to keep some of the green space as is.
Yeah. But did you show it there because you needed it for the parking count for, for a, for a unit?
No, that's just the way that they designed it, and they said that I could change that at any time after the fact.
Yeah. Because it seems like you've got enough.
I got ample parking, existing parking, yeah. And there is a Japanese maple there that I don't want to have to take down if I don't have to.
I don't know. I, I did drive by, but the Japanese maple is really close to the front of the house. I don't know how you're gonna put it in the staircase if you.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the back. The back.
Oh, okay.
The one in the front of the house, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure if that's gonna stay or not.
Yeah, I can't imagine it would. It would, even if they could somehow squeeze a new staircase in there, it would probably kill the tree anyway.
Yeah. The one in the back, like I said, ideally I'd like to keep.
Okay. That's the one.
So the plans also say that, well, I know your drawings, not for construction.
Chance it could change at all, or?
I mean, unless you guys have any special requests, or the building inspector has any special requests. The current layout was the layout that I, I approved. So as long as that all adheres to current building codes, then I would like to continue with what I have.
I mean, I don't know if I'd say I'm picking if he changes the interior layout. Even at that, it's just for us to become a three-family. So even if he were to raise the roof for whatever reason, as long as you're under what your max is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
There's not much we can do any, not.
I, I don't think we have to stip, I don't think we should be stipulating the permit on that floor plan anyway, so.
No. Is there anyone from the public?
Okay, so. If we are not gonna stipulate that, then should I not include these plans that show the floor plan?
You're not gonna have to include any of the plans because the primary issue in front of the board. Is just it being allowed to go from a two-family to a three-family. In terms of height, if he goes above height, he has to come back to us. That's a different issue.
Right.
But if he changes peak.
Setbacks change or anything else changes, it's.
Or if setbacks change, something like that, that's.
If they're, and they can change as long as they don't, as long as they still comply with zoning.
Right.
I mean, I don't foresee that changing, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Well, we try not to.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna bind you to these plans unnecessarily.
No, I understand, I understand.
If you decide to change this, we wanna let you change it, basically.
No, I appreciate that.
So you know, now you second-guess the peak. Okay, is there anyone here from the public on Belmont Street? If you can just, do you want to come up and make a comment? Or did you just wanna stay in the background?
I would have to stay in the background.
Okay. All right. Any more questions from the board? Going once, going twice?
Do you wanna?
Nope, he doesn't want to.
You don't wanna speak?
Don't worry, I'll let him know.
I think he wants to say something, but he just doesn't wanna come up to the mic. Well, if you wanna speak, you do need to come up to the podium so that it can be part of the record.
Here's the process. The board has no more questions. If we don't hear anything from the public and the applicant has nothing else to add, we close the meeting. We close this application, which means you then do not have an opportunity to speak or to say anything. And whatever our decision is, is our decision. You do have the right to appeal. But sometimes saying something to the board can weigh it one way or the other. So if you do have something you would like to add, I encourage you to do it at this point, because this will probably be the only opportunity.
I'll go up.
Okay. I welcome you up. We are very easygoing. And if you can just give us your name and your address.
Ted Roy, 36 Belmont Street.
Okay.
3436. So I have a duplex on the street. But ever since these people moved in a long time ago. We lost the whole sidewalk there on the street at the end.
Okay, you've lost.
They, they never cleaned the leaves or nothing like that. And now you have people in the garage that actually park on the sidewalk. There's a school bus that goes there all the time. The traffic is terrible. People are parking on both sides of the street. And if you make that to a three-family, it's gonna even put more cars on the street, and these cars are always on the sidewalk.
Okay. Is it parking on both sides of the street?
Yes.
Okay. What I'm gonna say in terms of cars parking, whether it be guests or, or tenants?
Yep.
If it's both-way parking, that's not something I can control?
So you can park on the sidewalk?
If somebody's parking on a sidewalk, I say call the police department. It, that's.
We don't have authority over.
I don't have authority over someone parking on a sidewalk. That's, that's just my thing. If there's, if you have safety concerns in terms of, I know there have been safety concerns on other streets, and they have made them one-way streets. They have made it parking only on one side. If those are issues and concerns you have, those would be brought to DPW or the police department. It's just not something under the zoning board purview.
Now, he says that he's gonna be moving in there with his daughter on the third floor. This is his apartment. Well, the same thing happened a long time ago where they said they were gonna stay there, they were gonna live there, and then they rented the whole thing out.
Well, he's not required to reside in the property. I ask because I'm sitting here going, as one of my board members mentioned, about whether snow or something's gonna come through the roof. I'm sitting here going, well, if, if he's living in it the first year, he's gonna find if he's got a water leak coming from the roof. But residing in the property, again, is not something, I can't force somebody to live in a property.
So you can change a, a two-family into a three-family?
So the thing comes down to if he's looking to change it from a two-family to a three-family, the issue becomes parking.
Yep.
And obeying by building codes and the safety codes, and so long as he follows that.
He'll have the special permission.
Yeah. I mean, he has enough parking is, is one of the things. So he could make it so that, you know, the second and third floor are one apartment, and it's four or five bedrooms, and you could have just as many cars there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Okay. Anything further from the applicant?
I move that we close the public.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion, what do we got?
I agree with you that I would not choose that roof line just because of snow concerns. I have a shallow roof in my house, and it is a pain every year with the amount of snow that builds up on it. And falls off in large chunks. But that's not, I, I don't think that that has any weight on whether or not we should grant a special permit for a third unit.
It's not like a safety concern that would be in our pre, purview to think about.
I mean, there's other houses, I mean, there's other buildings that.
Frank is right, there is code. It exists for a reason.
You could have a flat roof.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean. It might have to be rubber, right?
Right.
But that's, again, not really us. That's more like the building inspector.
Right.
Well, the apartment com, not all of them, but apartment complexes, a lot of them have flat roofs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I.
The roof is not, the roof is not an issue. It's gonna be structurally sound. It's not gonna be, or it's not gonna pass inspection.
I've just shoveled a lot of those flat roofs, and it's sketchy. I wouldn't, I, unlike Mike, I would, just wouldn't do it myself.
I think, you know, this lot in particular, it's a.
Big lot.
It's a big lot, so it's really, I think, conducive to being able to, to do this.
He's really not changing the footprint, like, almost at all.
What is the parking space requirement? How is it?
Of course, I don't have my book with me. It's something like one and a half parking spots per bedroom? I'm looking at Jennifer as she should know. Of course, I didn't bring my book with me, but James came very well prepared. I wanna say it's one and a half parking spots per bedroom. It's something.
Per bedroom or per unit?
Per bed, no, it's per bedroom. It's not per unit.
And is that like actual, is that potential parking spaces like shown on the map, or is that actual in-use parking spaces?
It can't be one and a half per bedroom.
No, yeah.
No, that's a lot, yeah.
But again, I think it, I think Paul's gonna deal with it when he grants the permit. Like, he's not gonna grant the permit unless, if he doesn't have enough parking spots, right?
That's true.
Well, I don't think he.
I mean, it's not, it's not really our.
Yeah, and if those potential parking spots on the map are part of that, though, and we don't read this into the record with the maps, does that change anything? This is a point-of-order question. I have no idea.
I mean, I think the building inspector would have cited it as a thing that needs to be. Well, I don't know. Actually, I don't know if that's true, but.
I don't think he addressed, hold on. I don't think he addressed parking.
So it's gotta comply with all other requirements.
A conversion of his existing dwelling to accommodate not more than five residential units by special permit. Owner wants to convert two-family to a three-family in an R4 district. Will need to meet all building and fire codes, which includes sprinkler and fire alarm system and egress requirements. Paul doesn't bring up an issue in terms of parking. I know in the past when we've done ones where the parking is sketchy in the sense of you're barely getting enough parking spots. We've addressed the issue of.
It has been run up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those one we had a long time ago.
Why is Paul not here to answer these questions?
Because Paul is on vacation, and I am incredibly jealous.
Much deserved, but it would be helpful.
No, it's not. I should be there. Have we found the.
I did speak to Paul regarding that, and he said that there should be no issue with the size of the lot. Is that his biggest loss in that neighborhood?
You need to be up at the mic.
Right, I think he's not supposed to.
He's not, I mean, technically, technically, and I understand what you're doing, and normally if Paul was here, I'm sure he would open his mouth. But since we closed.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's okay. Again, normally Paul would give us his input, so I will make sure to let him know he was.
I don't think we have an issue.
Very much missed. You can't find it?
No.
I mean, I think you're right. If it were something that he wanted to bring up, he probably would have mentioned it.
Well, I think the problem, the only thing's gonna be is that if he goes for his building permit and he doesn't have the parking, Paul's gonna say go back to zoning.
Yeah.
Didn't get the parking.
That's true.
Like I say, I, I recall there was an issue.
He's got space on the slot to.
I mean, he's got plenty of space. I was just thinking that like if part of what he's, if part of what Paul is considering is the parking that's listed on the map that doesn't currently exist, that's currently a, a tree. If, if we don't read that in, does that undermine what Paul's trying to do with guaranteeing that a lot of parking?
I don't think so, because we haven't waived, there's nothing in here waiving.
Well.
Parking, the, the parking requirements from the, of the bylaw, so they'll have to comply with it.
Let's do this. We will put in. I want specifically this page. So sheet 3 of 6. From GJ Design Group. This outlines the parking he's proposing.
In that way, if Paul says you have to have that parking in there, at least it's in the record.
Well, that's forcing him to take down the tree.
Well, no, 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 because he has the choice if it's found that he doesn't need that parking.
Right.
That he doesn't use it.
But it kind of empowers Paul to be able to create it if it's needed.
Right. Because if the.
I think then he's required to put it in. If we reference it, if we reference this.
You can always make it, you can always make your project smaller from what you're getting from us.
Right.
You can't make it bigger without coming back to us.
Right.
The building, but not necessarily the parking. If we're approving it for that parking plan.
As long as he has the amount of parking, the total amount of parking that would be required for this project, then he wouldn't have to add anymore. But if Paul says you do need more parking.
This is where he has to put it.
Then this is where he'd have to put it.
Or come back to us.
Or come back to us with a different plan.
Okay.
That's what I'm going with.
I'm not sure that's my take on it, Bill.
Well, Mike.
You guys are all, think it is, so I'll go along with it.
Mike, I mean, so.
I could be wrong.
You feel like he will be required to put in his parking if we include this map in the reading?
That's, it could be enforced.
We could separately stipulate that he had to put in the parking, right? That is a thing that we could write in as a writer, but I don't think we intend to do that.
What about putting in the map, but, you know, subject to the, the.
Parking requirements?
Yeah, yeah, he's accepting the, you know, the parking arrangement or, you know, making that an exception to what's in the map. I mean, maybe it's overcomplicating things, but if there's any concern about that, we can say the map, other than, you know, the map should be included, other than any strict interpretation of the, you know, the parking layout.
I mean, or we don't include that, and if Paul needs more approval specifically around parking, then they have to come back, but that also feels like an unfairness in some ways.
Well, if he has to come back, then he has to do all the certified mailings again. He has to pay the fee again.
I think that's the right approach. I'm just not sure of the word.
I don't know that you can say.
I don't know that you can say, like, oh, we'll put this in stipulating that you have some plan on parking. Like, that's not, I don't know that that's something we can add.
We can make a condition, you know, we can make conditions.
I think we are getting too complicated.
Or is that implied anyway? I mean, is it implied that he's, you know, he's gonna have to have, you know, sufficient parking to?
All right, so.
Yeah. Seems like it's implied.
For two or more bedrooms, the code in North Andover is that you need two, two parking spots per dwelling unit.
So that would be six for a three-bedroom.
So he would need the equivalent of three parking spots in that area for a three, for, sorry. No, you'd need a total of six parking spots, so.
Well, there's the garage.
So there's the garage, and then there's those three. So you would need three parking spots in some form on his property.
Well, he's got, he's got an old car garage in the side.
Actually built, aren't the ones at the top?
The ones at the top or not?
The ones, yeah, the ones that.
Right, he was thinking he probably, he didn't, he may not want to, I just don't want him to be forced to.
Does the three-car garage count towards that parking? I would assume.
Sure.
I mean, I don't see why it wouldn't.
This is all concrete pad or something here.
I mean, it looks like you fit twenty cars.
Probably put five more cars in there, spots.
Yeah, I mean, if you, even if you superimpose this same exact tandem parking grid up here, he has.
Huh?
Parking is just been tight. I mean, Paul's gonna, Paul's gonna backstop it.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I don't think we have to stipulate anything.
I'll read it, so I'll read it and reference this page.
Do we put the plan in or not put the plan in? Is the only question.
Here's my concern. If we don't put the plan in.
Then he may have to come back here.
And we don't address anything specific on parking.
Then it's per code.
Right.
And as long as what he's building complies with the zoning as-is, it shouldn't be any.
Well, but, so, maybe it's another point-of-order question, but like, the point of a special permit, right, is, I think you sort of read it, was like, to make sure that there aren't any other, like, random things that could cause problems by putting this type of special permit in place. One of the things, the only thing we've heard from one a butter is a concern about parking. So I am worried that if we don't in some way address parking, even if it's not Paul's specific point-of-order, that this is like, sort of superseding the point of a special permit. You know, if the point of a special permit is to ensure that there are not issues by changing this, the purpose of the structure, then it seems like a thing that to be talked about.
Isn't enough to leave out the plan, but say, you know, parking to be per code?
But it automatically is.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Right.
Right, so that's.
So then why do we need to say anything?
So that's my thing, is I don't think we need to say anything unless, the only reason we would need to stipulate this design is if this design did not conform to code and we were granting a variance to allow it, but we are not doing.
Gotcha.
Right? We're not granting any variance. If this thing does not meet the zoning, it wouldn't be allowed to be built regardless of whether or not we allow this, we put forward the sheet. If it is allowed, it'll be allowed to be built no matter whether or not we cite the sheet. So I don't think it changes anything to.
To cite the.
To cite or to stipulate unless we are making some kind of statement that is above and beyond the zoning code, right? If we wanted to say, hey, they need, instead of six spots, they need eight, we could actually specify that because we, to Laura's point, we would need to, we said, okay, well, this property has a special requirement that we think is gonna need more parking than other setups would have.
Gotcha.
But I don't think otherwise we should, we need to change anything.
Not change anything? But does that mean?
I don't think we need to cite any floor plans or designs. Because they will still have to meet code in whatever they're making.
Okay. I'm on board with that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a, it's not an issue.
Okay. I can take a hint. Okay, so then our.
I could do it either way I'm told. I'm open to either. I see your points, but.
Okay.
You just need to know what to read.
Yeah.
It's just a special permit.
Wrote it all down ahead of time, too.
It's nothing other than a special permit.
See, that's why you shouldn't think so much, no.
I know.
Okay, so any more discussion needed from the board?
No.
Okay. Can I have the motion? That's for you, Frank.
Yes. I move to approve a special permit pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.3, point N3, the conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than five residential units in accordance with section 195-10.7 of this bylaw, subsection N4 of this section in the R4 zoning district for the purpose of converting the existing third-floor attic space into a new apartment unit. Specifically, applicant has requested conversion of the existing two-family structure to a three-family structure in the R4 zoning district.
Can I have a second?
Aye, second.
James?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm also an aye, Frank?
Yes.
Laura?
Aye.
Okay. So that is approved. Give me about two weeks. At max, you'll have the decision.
Do you mail it to the house, or do I have to go to the home?
Jennifer?
I'll email it.
Oh, you'll email it, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Well, you may have. So they have an appeal period after the decision? Two weeks?
Yeah.
Appeal period's only two weeks?
No, I have two weeks to get them the decision, and then the appeal period is about thirty days, but they.
Twenty days.
Twenty days. But they will deal with all of that, so you'll be okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, up next is a new public hearing for 335 Salem Street. Frank, if you can read our legal notice.
Yep, let me sure. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of JCE Property Development LLC for property at 335 Salem Street, map 37D, parcel 54, North Andover, Mass, 01845, in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variant, variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.1. A contiguous building area, CBA, in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new single-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA needing a relief variance of 3,350 square feet, i.e. 13.4%. The CBA proposed is 15,400 square feet, and the CBA required is 18,750 square feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM.
You don't wanna throw in the rest of it? No, just joking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm kidding.
By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire Chair. Thank you.
It's nice to hear a name, Frank.
Geez.
Frank? Okay.
Almost blew that.
So I have a prepared statement that I plan to read. Can I give you each a copy?
Sure. I'm going to assume you're James.
I am James.
Manager of JCE Property Development.
Yes.
And you're gonna be reading this?
I will read it, and then we can roll over some highlights.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is James Urb. I'm the owner, member of JCE Property Development LLC. Thank you, board members. I'm here asking for you to vote on a reestablish the variance that you approved on June 13th, 2003. I purchased, I purchased 335 Salem Street on April 5th, 2024, ten months after the approved variance. So I purchased this property ten months after the board had approved it back in June 13th. I spoke with Paul Hutchins, Building Commissioner, prior to the purchase of 335 Salem Street, about the variance expiring, and he told me all I needed to do was file a building permit. And so I had gone in to talk to Paul and asked him about it, and he goes, no, just file a building permit. So I had done that. With not having a total understanding of the requirements, I have always felt that regarding the decision of June 13th, 2023, note three on the decision, generally, part A. If the right authorized granting a variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant, the such right shall be lapsed and may be reestablished after a notice or a new hearing pursued of Mass General Law 40A, Section 10. I had learned this at a planning board hearing on August 13th, 2024, that the variance had expired. Paul Hutchins, the Building Commissioner, was on vacation that week, so I actually went to him. I went to his office on Monday morning, August 19th, 2024, at which time he gave me a copy of Massachusetts High Court decision on the variance, one-year limit to obtain a building permit. The decision continues after that to say, in some circumstances, there's a copy as well in the package here. In some circumstance, in some circumstances, conveyance of a lot is reliance on a recorded dimensional variance may be considered a valid exercise of the variance. I have provided a timeline, which is the next page we'll go over when I finish this. I have purchased this property that I believe has established good faith in regards to exercising on the variance. I have invested over $382,000 to date. Interest on the loan is compounded daily. I've been to two planning board meetings regarding a watershed special permit. I have met the requirements from North Andover's outside counsel, Harsley, Witten Group, to request an approval for the special permit. I'm asking the board tonight to approve a reestablished variance on the merits that it was approved on June 13th, 2023. Thank you. If you go to the next page, it's got a timeline of, from the date of purchase. Date of purchase, so it was April 5th. We filed the building permit on June 12th. And then, at that time, when you buy the property, we hadn't had the house designed, so obviously, it took us some time to get the house designed. And then, and at that point, I was notified that we would need a special permit through the planning board. I had hired Jack Sullivan Group to do the design work to go to the planning board. And then, so then we filed the watershed permit on June 11th. And then, in the meantime, I've been to two meetings with the planning board on July 16th and July 13th. I filed for an electric permit to put up a temporary pole on May 20th. The permit was issued on June 2nd. It was inspected on June 14th. National Grid put power to the pole July 3rd. The planning board consultant had given us that approval that we met all the requirements for the watershed on August 7th. And then I filed a permit to reapply for the variance on August 22nd. And here I am.
So that's what I'm gonna say. In terms of the information you provided us tonight, I listened to everything you said, but we have time requirements on when documents get submitted to us. And that's because, don't take this the wrong way, I'm not gonna sit here and look through all of this and partially read.
Sure.
A decision.
Yep.
And use that as a basis.
Yep.
So that I'm not going to address in that sense.
Okay.
I am more than happy if we end up coming back next month to look at the case law that you have listed and take that into consideration. But it's not something I'm going to take into consideration tonight. And that's only because it's not fair to me for you to put a partial case in front of my face and ask me to stop the board to read it. And I would like to be able to read it in its entirety.
Okay.
If I'm gonna use it as a basis. That's my first thing.
I would also add that we have not been asked to consider a finding. We've only been asked to consider a variance.
We have only been asked to do a variance. I wanna ask, you submitted this plan, which is dated August 21st, 2024.
Right.
Okay. You're submitting this as part of your application today, correct?
Yes, it's in the application.
Okay. This is going to sound like a very ignorant question.
Okay.
It will make sense afterward. Do you own what is identified as Lot 2 on this plan?
No, I don't.
Okay. So explain to me how an existing crushed stone driveway to be relocated entirely onto Lot 2 is going to take place if you do not own Lot 2.
Say that again, again?
If you look at the plan.
Yep.
Okay, right next to where it says Salem Street, to the left of that, there's a box.
Correct.
And it says, existing crushed stone driveway.
Right.
To be relocated entirely onto Lot 2.
Correct.
How do you relocate entirely a driveway onto a property that you just said you don't own?
So that's not my responsibility.
Excuse me. This is a plan you are submitting.
Right.
On behalf of the Lot 1.
Right.
Which you are the owner of.
Okay.
On here, okay, it says, existing crushed stone driveway to be relocated entirely onto Lot 2. This is your plan. So who put in existing crushed stone driveway to be relocated entirely onto Lot 2?
So this is the plan that was.
That was that application.
Okay.
This is an, I understand your situation, I do. But this is an entirely new application. The documents you provide are your responsibility.
Okay.
So I understand what the conundrum is here. I understand the problem. But this was submitted by you as part of your plan. And I'm still not getting an answer of how you're going to entirely relocate it entirely onto Lot 2.
Or has it already?
No, it has not.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm snippety over this.
Yeah, okay.
I walked this property, literally walked the sidewalk, didn't do a drive-by, walked the sidewalk today.
And we got supplemental stuff about it.
Huh?
We got supplemental information about that specific issue also.
Well, and I'll say this, anything going on outside of the zoning issue.
Yep.
I don't care about because it is not our purview.
Yep.
So it's completely irrelevant to me, anything outside of a zoning issue. But when you submit a plan to me that says something is going to be done, I can tell you for a fact that this morning at 10 o'clock in the morning, I walked this sidewalk, and I can tell you this driveway was not relocated entirely onto Lot 2. And it doesn't look like that's the intent from what I am seeing. And I also don't know how you entirely relocate entirely onto a lot that. And I also don't know how you entirely relocate entirely onto a lot that you don't own.
Yeah, that wasn't the understanding that, I understand what you're saying, but that wasn't the intent when-
So what do you mean? When, what, tell me your understanding of relocated entirely onto Lot 2. What does that say to you?
So those are words from the engineer.
Okay, but this is your plan, the engineer's not here.
I understand what you're saying. I understand your argument. I don't understand how it would be relocated entirely on Lot 2.
That's my big issue. And if the engineer was here, I'd be pointing at him straight in the face and asking him the exact same question. Because when an applicant comes in here and tells me that they own one lot, and they're going to do something to a lot that they have zero control over, I use these documents and I base decisions and questions on these documents. I understand what happened because I looked. And as much as I sit here and say to you, your application is based solely on what's provided here, not what was done June of 2023, that's a mess-up. But again, this is part of what's being submitted for us to look at and us to make a decision on.
Yeah, I don't, I think, well, I'm not going to sit here and argue with you, but I think the intent is not what you're thinking, and maybe the language is wrong in-
Well, here's going to become the problem. This is, and this is just the reality of it. I look at every application on its own merits. So your situation is somewhat a little bit unique in the aspects of, yes, over a year ago, a decision was made. And what's interesting is I'd sit here and say to you, this is basically the exact same plot plan that was used, except for the house is a little bit different now. But this is the same thing. So I would sit here and say that somebody messed up because this driveway was not relocated in its entirety. And that is incredibly important to me. Because when we read this, if you want to look and say, okay, well, look at my prior decision, or the prior decision that was done, and what I based my purchase on and all of my work on, I sit here and say to you, what the board based their decision on didn't happen because that driveway was not relocated in its entirety. It was cut off. And I understand, based off of lot line, is why it was cut off, but that was not what was represented on a plan. So it doesn't work good either way. Whether I look at the last application in 2023 and take that into consideration, it doesn't work good. And now, you know, a difference being now is that this is on its own merits. It's a brand-new application. And there's, one of the obstacles you're probably going to have is that you're now having a direct abutter, which the prior applicant didn't have because they were the direct abutter.
So I guess what, so I understand that point, and I'll actually talk to the engineer about it. Because that was, that was what was approved when they divided both, made these two lots. So this was one lot, was made to part of the variance and its hub.
I was here. I sat here, I was part of it.
Yeah, I know. Hold on, what my thought was. So I thought, and so in the, in the Note 3, it says that I can reestablish the variance, right?
You have to, well, your options were, prior to it expiring, which, again, if you want to look at the old variant, the prior decision that was done in June, you're right. 3. If the rights authorized by a decision granting variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant, then such rights shall lapse and may be reestablished after notice, and a new hearing pursuant may. The key word there is going to be may, not will. It's a may because you're going through the process again.
The whole purpose of making you come back here is that circumstances change in a year. And so the term limit for when you can break ground is so that if there are substantial changes in that time, we get to reconsider them and look at them again. And as Madam Chairwoman pointed out, this used to be two lots owned by the same person who had control of both lots, and now it is two lots owned by two people, and it changes the circumstances a little bit.
I believe when we granted the variance the first time, the stated intention was that the same residents would move into this Lot 1.
He wasn't, he wasn't sure if he would move there or not.
That was a question mark?
That was a question mark. I don't think he committed to-
And the problem is, we can't-
No, 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 yeah, I'm just saying, like, in terms of changing circumstances, I would say that that is-
So here's where we get to the fun butterfly effect part of all of this, which is that last time we had this discussion, and I think we're going to get some public comment on this in a moment, is there's a lot of concern about drainage. And we spent a lot of time talking about drainage. And a plan for drainage was provided as part of the variance that was granted last time. And, you know, my feeling at that time was is that I felt satisfied that it would not leave that property worse than what it is now, as it is blank. It would not prevent all flooding, certainly. It would not necessarily even improve the flooding of the neighborhood, but it would not worsen it. That now, because we're now going to have even a slight change to this plan of impermeable area.
Yep.
I think we need some, we will need a-
Runoff.
Plan, runoff plan that is viewed as applicable to the plan that you then proposed.
Well, also, prior application, and I don't know because I don't deal with water, prior application, because I went back, I watched all three hearings that we did back then to have a better understanding of what we did then, because I don't always remember. They addressed runoff specifically to the design that they had.
Right.
They also never addressed, and I learn something new every day, anything about driveway. And we once again have the exact same two abutters who had issues with the application last time, are having issues with it now. And then you have the direct abutter. So you've added at least one other person on. So I'm definitely going to want to know what we're dealing with.
But didn't you, didn't you just deal with the watershed?
Yeah, we've just gone through the planning board. I actually have a copy of the decision here that we were in compliance to what the town of North Andover is requiring. And we, it was going to get voted on, on, what was that timeline date? On August 13. And that's when we had found out that the variance had expired, so they just continued it. The chair didn't want to make a vote on it without knowing where we stood with the variance.
And that was with, what, when did you go through conservation?
We've been to two hearings.
Conservation or planning?
Planning.
Planning?
Yeah, because it's a watershed permit which goes through-
Right, right, right. Just making sure.
When did you go to planning?
So we've been to two meetings. We've been to, July 16 and August 13. And Gene has the approval by the consultant firm.
Okay.
I believe the same thing happened last time. We're planning kicked it to us for that.
It didn't go out of anybody else.
No, no, it went to us before anyone else.
And planning was only- Oh, and then planning said, we'll see what you guys say. Because they had to go to planning to divide the lot.
That's the thing. I think they went to planning first and then came to us.
Yeah, I think planning kicked it to us to do the variance.
But, I mean, I can say right now, I'm not making any decision based off of this plan. So-
I do think you're right, that a lot of their discussion last time was about mitigating water runoff. And there's none of the same, well, there's one for the driveway, but there's none of the infiltration system for the house.
Right, we don't have something to cite here.
Right.
And we do need something to cite. So presumably if you have already dealt with this with planning, then that plan, you know, if you, I think the next time you submit a package, just include that with it, and that'll be helpful to us to-
Well, it didn't happen.
Do you have a water mitigation plan?
I do.
Not just for the driveway, which is what was submitted with the application, but also for the house.
It incorporates everything.
Okay, so that's going to have to get a copy to Jen?
Yep.
So that we can get a copy?
Is that just a decision, or is there actual plan on the second page? Is there a second petition?
No, so this is a review of the plan that was submitted by the engineer.
Okay.
And then this is them reviewing it, and Jack had to make some adjustments to meet the requirements. And then this letter basically says that we've met all the requirements.
I think the plan itself needs to be submitted so that we can cite it in our decision, so that it's part of the grant, granting of the variance.
I want all of the water stuff. Anything you did with planning involving water needs to make its way to Jen so that it can make its way to us.
So I guess what my thoughts are about that-
By the way, you might want to have engineer change record of owner. I mean, this is, I'm truly a bit disappointed. I mean, I believe this is, I mean, this is the same engineering group that came in here before, and-
It's a proofreading nightmare.
It's just, it's sloppy work on their part, and I hate saying that because I don't like doing that to a company. But come on, I have the record owner as the prior owners. All that's been done is the house you want to construct has been slapped on and a new date. I mean, that's basically it. Because I can tell you, if I look at the other plan, and again, sloppy work, if I had the other plan, I can tell you, the numbers don't match up.
No, actually, the house is smaller in depth.
No, the house-
What was approved, the house is actually smaller in depth. All the setbacks are the same.
No, 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 no. And, I wish I, I was going to tell you to print it, and I didn't.
I have a copy of it right here.
Do you have a copy of the prior plan?
Yes.
Okay, can I see a copy of it?
You may.
So this is 45.2. So that's, that's a difference.
Because we shortened the width of the house from what was approved to, we went to 28 feet from 30. So we made it smaller.
But see-
And then the driveway is the only other change.
Well-
And the drainage system was changed. So someone in the future wanted to put a swimming pool in, they wouldn't have to redo the drainage system.
Yeah, I wouldn't be telling anybody you're getting a swimming pool in this spot.
Well, I'm just-
I understand, I'm just, I wouldn't be banking on saying that. So the engineer needs to, without a doubt, resubmit and double-check their work. So that's one thing I can tell you I would want for the next meeting.
Yeah, so I think on that note about the crushed driveway, that was when they had separated the properties before the neighbor had actually bought it. Because that was done before she bought the house.
Right, but understand that this is how this is going to not-
I understand what you're saying.
It's not going to benefit you. Because at the end of the day, if you want me to look at the June 2023 decision, and this is part of it, and I walk by that property, and I see that the driveway has not been relocated entirely, and I emphasize on that because it wasn't, we're cutting the driveway off and throwing in the lot line. They were relocating it. When I read relocate entirely, that basically means if the end of the driveway is 20 feet, you're moving 20 feet over. End of story. So that's not going to help you, because I'd sit here and look to you and go, somebody messed up. And I understand it might not have been you, but somebody needs to be responsible for that. Because that's not okay in anyone's book. If this is, if this is what's being used, and, for example, a person's looking to buy Lot 2, I'm going to be pretty PO'd. I mean, I'm going to be upset over that.
But they bought it with that condition, knowing that the driveway was going to be cut. But I-
No, no, because it says relocated entirely. You're right.
I understand what you're saying. So that definitely was wrong on the engineering side of it.
If that block was not there, and it is, it's on the one from 23. If it was not there, I'd say, yeah, you're right, owner of Lot 2 should have done a better due diligence to realize what was going to happen once that lot next to him sold. But that's not what this says. So that's just, that's just not okay in my book. So-
Is there perhaps a lack of due diligence on the part of whoever was preparing the closing documents for Lot 2? I know, you know, they're usually pretty good about looking through open permits and whatnot.
I will tell you, I, because I spent numerous hours on this this morning. I love doing it because I love doing it. The problem was is that this Lot 1, in trying to like compare, it's possible that a closing lawyer might have messed up. I mean, it-
Because this plan was initially submitted as part of a request to subdivide.
Right.
Which stated the subdivider's intention to move the driveway, which they didn't do before selling the lots.
Correct.
So like, in, my understanding is in theory, like, the lawyer and broker that you work with when you buy a lot are supposed to look for those sorts of conflicts.
You're not always, I'm going to sit here and say, you're not always picking it up because when you're reading a deed, and one of the things being is that for this, they didn't, they basically just created a new deed for Lot 1.
Right.
And had Lot 2-
Would not have attached all that stuff to Lot 2.
Well, see, what's interesting is if you actually look on the deed for the purchase of Lot 2, it references this plan reported at the registry of deeds. And it says relocate entirely. So the, my two cents as a lawyer, Matthew, if you're a lawyer, correct me on this. If I see this recorded, and this is the wording I'm seeing, that's, that's what I'm holding to.
I mean, that's the condition of the lot that you would expect you would be buying, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right.
So if, so with your argument, if your argument is correct, so that would be the-
I'm not here as a lawyer, I'm here as a chair of the board.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying. So if that argument is correct, then it would be the responsibility of both parties that own both of those houses.
It would be the responsibility of the person who brought this. I mean, and don't get me, I look at this as, this is what I got in 2023.
Yep.
This is what is recorded at the registry of deeds.
Correct. I understand what you're saying.
So who's, I'm not going to sit here and say, whose responsibility?
Right.
Because that's not my position, that's not my job. What I am allowed to say and what I can say is, this is not what was done. So whose responsibility that falls on, whether it falls on, that's not for me. That's, that's for lawyers, and in this situation, I am not a lawyer. I am a member of a board and a chair of a board. But what I do know is that it was not done.
I understand what you're saying.
As of this morning, and I doubt a driveway was entirely relocated on a piece of land you don't own.
No, it wasn't.
I was there at 10 o'clock. So it was not done.
Right.
So please make note of that because that's my biggest thing, that's the biggest crutch for me right now, and that's before I even get to public comment.
So I know there were some emails, and I didn't, I didn't get caught up on everything. But so what is the issue of the, does Lot 1 owner not have a driveway now? Is that because it goes on to Lot 2?
No, 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 no. Lot 2.
I mean, I'm sorry, does Lot 2 not have their full driveway?
Lot 2, lost. I mean, honest to God, and granted, I don't do math, I don't do measurements, but eight of nine feet is what got cut off of their driveway.
It's approximately 12 feet.
Okay.
And there's 17 feet left.
12 feet got knocked off of the driveway. And I will tell you, when you are there, that driveway is the narrowest, and it is on the worst part, and it is, I refuse to pull in the driveway. I parked at the street, across the street, so I could run across the street and literally walk it because I don't think you truly get a grasp for how small that remaining 17 feet is.
Is there, is there a house in Lot 2?
There is a house in Lot 2. There is a huge-
Who's the owner of?
That was the existing house before this was subdivided.
Before this was subdivided.
So back in-
Does the same original owner own Lot 2 still?
No.
No, so what happened was Lot 1-
She's here behind me.
Lot 1 and Lot 2 were one lot. And when this came before us last year, the, we'll just go with, the owner's relatives had, it would have been one lot, then they split it into two lots, and they made it one lot again, then they wanted to make it two lots. At the time, the advantage that the applicant at that time had was, there was only two abutters. And two abutters were addressing water issues. They lived in Lot 2, and Lot 1 was vacant. So now we have the problem that Lot 2 was sold to a bona fide buyer, and now Lot 1 has been sold to a buyer who are not the same people.
Right, okay. But I guess how does the driveway issue become his responsibility?
Here's my thing. This is my thing. When I- Here's my thing. This is my thing. When I get a plan, I'm trusting that these plans are accurate.
Okay, I understand that.
And so when we make. No, no, no. Here's the problem.
If he updates the plan.
Here's the problem. No matter how he looks at it, if he wants me to look at twenty-three, decision, because that's basically what he's saying. His, his big argument is, this is one in twenty-three, there's no difference now, give it back to me. I mean, he's saying it nicer than that, but that's essentially what he's saying. And I sit here and say, well, every applica, it, it's not an extension. It is a legit, brand-new package. And circumstances have changed because we have different direct abutters. And I again sit here and say.
I, I think the, the lots have to be treated, you know, always like they're, they're independent in ownership.
But you don't.
And the, the abutters have, you know, the abutter just, just gives them an opportunity to comment or appeal or do whatever they want.
Except for, and a butter can make a difference on whether or not an applicant gets what they're looking for. Because there have been plenty of times, there was one a few months ago where we had eighteen letters of support for somebody and we basically sat here and said, okay, nobody's opposing. We've had issues where people have opposed and strictly based on people opposing, haven't gotten what they wanted.
This is probably a dumb question, but why are there more, why are there more abutters now?
Because at the point that this was here in twenty-three, lot one and lot two were the same person.
Right.
So there was nobody.
You mean the lot two, the new lot two owner is the new abutter?
The lot two, the new lot two owner is.
But I mean, there, there aren't other new abutters, right?
Honestly, we've only, as of earlier today.
I don't mean that are here. I mean.
There, there are not more added abutters in the sense that they're not more creation of abutters, right?
Just the lot two, the new lot two owner.
Changed hands. There may be a different abutter. I know the house, the property to the left.
I just didn't understand the statement, there are new abutters.
Yeah.
I, I thought you meant new property, somehow new.
Oh, no. Well, the thing was is that in twenty-three, we had two forty marble ridge and two seventy marble ridge, who both opposed based off of water. And it was pretty, I mean, it was pretty dramatic and pretty, pretty drastic. There was, there was a gentleman in a life jacket and I think water was like up to his waist. So.
And I, you know, speaking for myself, only here, like, I think to Madam Chairwoman's comment about needing a plan that is consistent with what we have, right? The consequence of that is that if it is different than what was originally proposed, then we just have to consider it on its own terms, right? And so I think we just, we need to, to have a plan that reflects the current reality of what is physically there. And, and then we will then have it, then we will consider it on its own merits.
So what are the differences though? I mean, I don't have the old plan here in front of me.
So the, the, the main difference is just that apportionment of the driveway, that the driveway is supposed to be somewhere else. It is not.
No, in the original plan, it's, it's, it's still the same.
The original plan didn't have a driveway.
Okay.
The plan in twenty-twenty-three did not outline a driveway or a walkway.
It had a proposed driveway on the front of the house.
The, but the, I think the issue is the property line's the same. It's just that.
Proposed driveway, right down.
Big concrete drive. And they didn't even address it in the water issue. And we're now making it, we're making it pavers and we're doing a walkway.
That's why we've addressed it with the planning board and, and the study that we've done.
So for, at least for me, for next month, updated plot plan and anything and everything that you've done on other boards involving water.
Okay.
So that you don't, there's, obviously not going to have you recreate. If you've done it, then you've done it, but we need it.
If they don't, drainage calks and that.
Yeah, no, we have all of that.
That's what the town consultant has a review for.
Oh, and any reviews, any consulting reviews, any, anything.
So we've had experts look at the, the drainage calks.
No, we have all of it that we've done through the planning department. So that's, that's completed.
I think the water issue is all part of the watershed permit.
Yeah, I think.
Yes, but I think we want to stipulate it.
That's right. I'm just saying that the, the water issue is, is part of planning board's watershed.
But part of us granting a variance, right, is that the documents involved in that, in achieving that variance are part of what they're beholden to going forward.
I, I get it. I'm just saying, it's already on record with the planning board, the whole watershed issue.
Well, we're not, I'm not on the planning board. I don't know what was submitted to us.
I get it. I get it. So the, the reasoning for me in thinking about this is that if we are granting a variance on, on continuous buildable area, then the amount of water issues that it causes is relevant to that variance specifically. And so I would like to be able to have those documents to stipulate them, to say that if those things change, the variance, our granting the variance changes, regardless of what happens with the planning board.
Okay. Are there any more questions for the applicant?
Oh, it's.
This isn't your final chance.
It, it, it sounds like we're trying to, somehow we're trying to solve this issue with the driveway.
No, there's no issue with the driveway because I can say right now, I, I know for a fact, this is not an accurate thing. And aside from the driveway, how do I know it's not accurate? Because the record owner isn't the gentleman who is the applicant who is in front of us. So I would not let the board make any decision, no matter which way it's going, with this.
So.
This is going to be addressed next month.
They have to change the name of the.
They have to change the name of the owner and they have to depict what it actually looks like. The fact, the issue of, of relocated entirely, that, that's not going to end up being an issue for us. My biggest thing on it is that I know that's not the case, so I don't want it on a plan.
So you want that note taken off?
I can tell you right now, unless the applicant is going to get permission to go onto somebody else's property and create it, then.
But yes, that is what she's saying.
All he has to, all he has to do is take the note off the plan, I guess, is the point.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
So, but then it becomes an issue between.
It's an issue between.
Two, that two's lot, two's driveway isn't as wide as it could have been or should have been.
But that's not an issue for this board.
It doesn't affect us.
It doesn't.
But if, 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 if they can solve it, that'd be good.
Is it that the variance was previously issued based on the plan and the plan included that relocation of the driveway? And thus.
For me?
This isn't simply, at least on that basis, this isn't simply a redo of the, yeah.
Right. Right. And I can tell you, this would have been.
I wasn't here last year, so I, I.
Be thankful because that was like three months, four months, three months of hearings.
And they were all long.
And they were all very long.
Well, we have to debate both a finding or a variance, so here we're only talking about variance.
And here's my thing. I need a plot plan that depicts what it looks like. The issue of what was done on a prior variance and what was supposed to be done and wasn't done is outside of my purview. I'm not going to address it. So. Any more questions for the applicant? And then I will address the applicant and then public comment. Nothing yet. Okay. Is there anything you would like to add before I go to public comment?
No, I'll have to, I will trust it. We'll address the issue and, you know, I mean, we're, I'm here, I'm here to build a house to, for a family and to create friends and neighbors, not to, for a conflict, conflict. But, you know, I'll have to address it with the engineer and we'll have to move forward and.
He is, he was in here, he was in here with us for three months last time. He's more than welcome to come back because I only give you this mouthful because he's not here for me to give it to him. So you probably saved him a little bit. Okay, so I'm going to open it up for public comment. This is what I will say. When you come up, please give your name and your address. I know there is some additional issues going on with this property. What I will say to you, and it's not to be rude or mean or discredit anything, the zoning board is responsible for zoning issues and zoning issues only. If you have concerns about water, about zoning, about any of that, I am more than happy to hear it. I am going to ask because I know there are other people here. And again, our purview is only zoning issues. So I do ask that we try not to repeat too much of the same concerns. Not saying that if you were on one property and you have water issue and then there's a neighbor who also has water issue, please, yes, address it. But I don't need the, oh, one main street has water issue and we're really concerned about their water issue, if that makes sense. So please feel free to come up. This will be probably at least one of two opportunities because I can tell you we will be back here next month with this application, but if you don't speak, we can't hear you. So whoever would like to come first, I welcome you up to the podium. Anybody?
Hi, my name's Melissa Marammer. I'm the owner of lot two. I did not own the property back in June. I purchased the property in November. I didn't move in till January. Unfortunately, I did not do my due diligence and I, when I purchased the property, prior owner, the gentleman walked the land with me and told me the lot line was thirty feet from where it actually was. It was a double wall, a double rock wall. And then attorney LeBard is fantastic, but unfortunately, it was, it was missed, the crushed stone, because it said relocate and I can understand how that happened. But at this point where we're at, it's a huge safety concern for me. I drive about ninety thousand miles a year in my car and don't get in an accident, I'm going to get killed exiting my driveway. There has been, it's actually about eight and a half feet that have been taken from the driveway, which certainly is his land and he's entitled to, he owns the land, but it's a safety hazard for me. Unfortunately, after the watershed meeting last time, some egregious behavior was there and I came home to thirteen boulders, three feet high. That is a hazard. I have a seventeen-year-old daughter that literally every morning is going to get killed. I back her out of the driveway and get her out. Unfortunately, I've had a dumpster there, I just, today. Fortunately, the last electrical inspection went through, but it's been four months rehabbing the place. I take pride in being a good neighbor, but the boulders are a hazard. I've had eight cars exit my driveway that have hit the boulders. I've contacted, this has been an issue even before I found out about the driveway. I contacted the police. I contacted DPW. Before I purchased the property, there was about six feet high on the long rock wall that I since learned, Director Stanton told me that the old owner was instructed to take care of that because people walking, it was a hazard. You couldn't see over to Appleton. I took it upon myself without any direction to have it all removed. And it was a significant project that I undertook to do that. And then I contacted DPW, I mean, the police, they put up a hidden driveway sign, which is Paul's sense of security because people go fifty miles an hour around that twenty-mile dead curb. And it's, it's an issue. And then also the boulders, I contacted DPW and Curtis was looking into the issue. I had talked to Paul, questioning at least a couple of the boulders if they were on town property. I originally called DPW, was told, I wanted to know where the, the line was, the town owned to the crosswalk. They directed me to the building commissioner. Building commissioner told me it's a DPW. Called DPW, got the runaround. This been going on for two months. Now, the nice engineer from DPW came out with Curtis. The day that I came home to find my mailbox was taken off the post that was on three thirty-seven, lot one, physically taken off and stuck in a bucket, which took up more of my driveway. Which, you know, I've notified the United Postal Service. I've had a disruption of service. In fact, I didn't get notice of this meeting by mail until yesterday. Clearly, I've had a disruption of service in that and DPW is get, trying to get a hold of surveyor to see how long, at least to pluck a couple before someone gets killed there. I mean, you can pull the police records, how many accidents have occurred on Salem Street. It's a cross-through. People don't care. And I thank you for taking the time to do the site visit at ten o'clock. Tried taking it at seven twenty when my daughter exits. I get sworn at and cursed at every morning when I'm trying to back her out. The police now are, I was told, also the crosswalk, there's a crosswalk that literally the remaining eleven feet of my driveway backs up to a crosswalk. Literally. There's a crosswalk. It's going to be relocated is what I'm told. So when this variance got approved, I went back, I listened to all the previous meetings. And someone, when they, it first got denied, legal and conservation were against it. They got an attorney, it got approved. Someone asked in the meeting, what about an easement? And the, the response in the meeting was, someone else I have to worry about or something to that. So it was obvious it was an easement issue. The lot two, I have no problem if someone wants to build, make a living. I'm not trying to make a hardship for anyone. But I have a safety concern, this egregious behavior, the safety of my daughter and myself and for other cars flying down that road needs to be addressed.
The lot line.
You, yes.
So when I went there, and I'll try to, there's a stone wall and then there's a set of stairs that go down and a stone wall. There was a stake right next to the stone wall. Is that the, the line?
Yes, when they needed, when they split the two lots, they needed a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. So when you, if you pictured this, you have, you have the driveway. They took a portion of the driveway here, that driveway here that cuts across.
To angle it to give you.
And also now, so it cuts across and then there's a pathway, which it was an old barn, you'd have access to get the cows down here. Unbeknownst to me, because I was told it was a double rock wall, I now have no access to the side of my barn, here. I'm not arguing about that. I'm concerned about my safety, my safety issue. But that's been cut off. And then when you walk, you go down, the stake is right against the rock wall.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then it goes out to here. And then it goes down.
So you're the most direct abutter. I mean, I know two forty and two seventy are possibly here. They were here last time. But you are most direct and you are most, more or less kind of impacted. You did just make the comment that you're not trying to stop someone from building a house. I guess, and this is somewhat out of curiosity, what is it that you, prior to the boulders getting put up, was the driveway any?
Safer.
Was it any safer? And I, I ask that in the sense of, I understand people reversing and it, it's narrow at that end. I, I don't dispute that. But in terms of, you do have that turn, no matter what.
But it was safer because when you, when you're going around from Appleton and you're going towards Foxford, you, there's the crosswalk, which the police had taken care of. And after I cleared, it got, I got a little sense of relief, okay? Because I could get out because I still had the seven and a half to eight feet over here to the right.
Okay.
Now I don't have that. So if you move seven and a half to eight, you're probably one to two seconds less time that you have to get the hell out of the way.
Okay, so even moving the driveway in its entirety onto lot two doesn't fix?
It doesn't fix it because you also have here, you have.
A stone wall at the front.
You, exactly. You have a stone wall and you also have an old well, I mean, it's much further down. I mean, like a fifty-foot well. But you have a fire hydrant here. So the fire hydrant wasn't on the plan either. So if you look, you have a driveway and then you have this here and then you have a fire hydrant. Curtis told me that at my expense, I could move the fire hydrant. But that's not going to do me any good because I'm more in the line of the fire going fifty miles an hour on that corner.
Can I ask maybe a dumb question? Is, are the boulders there to demarcate the, the lot, the actual lot one, lot two, lot line?
No, it was retaliation. It was white.
Okay, well, I, I'm curious about that as well, but I mean, is that where they're placed? Are the boulders placed between the, the lot lines where the actual lot line is?
Yes, but to back up after the first watershed meeting, the next day it was white spray paint, which was clearly marking it. paint, which was clearly marking it. And then after the, I mean, I'm not going to speculate.
You mean, which goes through your driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I live across the street. If he, and again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know as far as moving it in its entirety, but if the new plan came back next month and had that triangle that's supposed to be moved as an easement and you got your driveway back, that part of your driveway, and you're still owning the land, but it's an easement for her to use her driveway, I don't think it impacts your driveway-
No.
-because they sort of meet right at the edge. I mean, does that solve everybody's problem?
Well, that might be something we can throw out, but I'm not going to-
Throwing it out.
It's something you can throw out, but I'm not going to, I guess I will say this, that is now an idea that you have given to the applicant that-
So, trust me, I know that corner's bad, there's an accident every month. Before you moved in, 10 years ago, when I moved in in 2002, every month is at least one and two during the winter, so be prepared. Yeah, I just-
It is a great suggestion. I don't-
I just trying to-
I don't disagree with that suggestion, but I'm not going to put-
Well-
-the applicant or an abutter on the spot of, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, let's chat.
Well, I'm just, again, suggestion, throwing it out there because you really don't need it. She could use it. You could make it an easement, still have your frontage and hopefully, everybody walks away happy.
Really, the ease and easement? Oh, I love it. I love the word play.
And the other issue is at this point, and it's probably not zoning, but I don't have a place for my mailbox. And I'm working with the US Postal Service and DPW, but at this point, it's in my driveway.
Well, I mean, if it's an easement, maybe, maybe it can go back where it was. Again, I don't know, just trying to throw that out there.
Thank you for your time.
Can I ask one last question?
Oh, sorry.
You mentioned having to back out. There is no, there's no room on that driveway to turn around, I take it?
No, because you either have to back in or back out. So, you would think backing in would be easy. That's even more dangerous than actually back.
No, I don't know, I totally understand.
You can't turn around.
Right, right, that's my question.
It looks like it and what's funny is, and this is why I'm such a visual person and why I actually had to go by, you really can't-
You can't turn around.
You can't turn around, no.
Yeah, okay.
I will say, according to car insurance, it is much safer to back in, like 80% of accidents involving getting in and out of a driveway happen when you're backing out. But I have driven by there, it is a very difficult spot.
It is brutal.
Not a lot of guest lists.
And also the fact you can't get a safety vehicle, God forbid, a fire truck or an ambulance with the width of the driveway. The fire department told me that they, you know, sometimes don't need to get in the driveway. Still, it's a concern to me that you can't access a safety vehicle in there. So, thank you.
Makes sense, thank you. Okay, who is up next? Because we have a room full of people, so I know you guys didn't just come. Did what?
You got to help.
I'm gonna let them, I'm gonna let them talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were-
He wants to jump the gun and get home.
I thought you were calling the next case, that's all right, I'm sorry.
Hi, Nathan Stiles, Bobby Zareth, we live at 240 Marble Ridge. We are here to talk about the water. No.
I think we, yeah, we hashed it out last year, so we're not here to talk about that.
Yeah, and we'll be brief again, it's getting late. Just two things I want to bring up. And I know this is a new application, but if we go back to the last year, the granting of the variance, I mean, when I read the terms here, it says, "A literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaws will involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to applicants." So, I don't think, you know, basically, the lot size has changed, it's the hardship that was on the applicants before. And, you know, I'm going to say, look at the hardship that has been created for the abutter now, based on this behavior. And I don't know how that is good for the public welfare. I mean, the question six on the application says, "Describe the impact on the neighborhood and how it will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or the public welfare." It says, and this is Mr. Erb's leg, "As such, construction of the prosvaling will improve the neighborhood and the public welfare." I don't think we're anywhere close to improving the public welfare here. And I don't think giving him more authority to do more on that land is going to improve it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you guys, just out of curiosity, can't remember who sent it, were you guys the one that sent recently the boat?
No, that was, that's the other-
That's 270.
That's 270.
It was a video that I didn't realize was a video and I clicked on earlier.
It's always a little-
I think it was on scuba gear at one point, too.
It was in a canoe.
It makes for a little bit of a chuckle.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
All over my head.
What's that?
This is all over my head. I wasn't around for the boat, the scuba gear.
I will send you pictures of the guy.
What?
Did you get the emails that Jen sent?
I think I missed an email.
Okay, yeah, they had a basically-
This morning?
Last year, were you the guy, were you guys the ones in the life jacket?
No.
That was them, too. I'll find the pictures for you. Okay.
They're certainly in your email.
Anybody else on 335 Salem Street? No, okay. Any other questions from the board at this point in time? Okay, this is what I'm going to say. Of course.
Can I make one more comment?
Of course, you're welcome to.
So, after Michelle had bought the property, we had a conversation-
Melissa.
I mean, Melissa, I'm sorry, Melissa. We had a phone call conversation and she had mentioned that her attorney had advised her to talk to me about an easement. Since that day, I have not got one call from her to revisit.
Okay.
So, I'm only saying that because I think the ball should be in her court and I understand what you're saying as well, okay? And I'm not opposed to it, okay? I'm willing to work at it, but I wasn't going to make an effort that I didn't need to make, is all I'm going to say.
And here's what I'm going to say, the problem's going to be is how smooth the situation You know, if you can take, and just understand, I'm going to continue your application for next month-
Yep.
-because of the reasons I've stated-
Sure.
-and the things the board's looking for. What I can tell you is that if the board approves your application, they approve it, two weeks, you get a decision, you go on your merry way and you deal with whatever other issues you have going on involving the property that's outside of zoning. If the board denies it, and don't forget, if we approve it, the abutters do have the right to appeal the decision to the courts.
Correct.
That is their right, that is their option. If we do not deny you, you are either waiting two years to redo or you are appealing and going to the courts. I couldn't tell you right now, this is the board that we have sitting. If any board member is absent next time and we're going to be taking a vote, Matthew will be the one to take over the vote. I have no idea what the board will vote. Finding agreements, it's kind of like with, when you go into court, finding agreements outside of court kind of guarantees you your own outcome.
Right, I understand.
So, whatever decisions you want to make to take that risk are up to you to take. I obviously can't tell you what to do. You are more than welcome if, come close to next month, you have been discussing alternatives that are outside of the zoning board, you are more than welcome to continue for the next month. We can continue to do that, there's not a pressure or a need of you having to come back. But finding a solution outside of the zoning board does determine your own fate. So, I just need a vote, can I have a vote to continue?
I move that we continue this meeting.
What's the date going to be? Sorry, Jen.
October 12th.
Oh, yeah, when I come back, yay.
I move that we continue this item until October 8th.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Jennifer's going to have you sign a time waiver and once you get all of those documents together that we're looking for, get them to Jen and she will get them to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, the long awaited. Have a good night, guys. Public hearing for 1250 Osgood Street.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
No one wants to hear about signage.
No one wants to hear about signage, they want to get home.
I also thought he was leaving and I was like, who's he?
No, he's going to stay with us. I feel like you were just here, but at the same time, I feel like it's been a while since I've seen you.
It's been a while since we've been here.
Both are true.
I think the last time I was here was actually probably when the original variance was on this one more issue.
And that was like the meeting before last month, okay. Listen, time flies when you're just having fun. All right, so we're going to have the legal notice read in and then you will run the show.
Notice hereby given that the North End of Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North End of Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North End of Mass on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Milford Learning LLC owner and 1250 Osgood Street developer for property of 1250 Osgood Street, MAP 35, parcel 10, North End of Mass, 01845 in the I-2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaw Section 195-10.8A for a front setback for the purpose of raising the existing sign and replacing it with the new, a new ground sign within the existing sign foundation location on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaw Section 195-6.6.G3 permitted signs, industrial district, one ground sign containing the name or other identification of the use on the property for each street on which the property fronts. Each sign is limited to an area of 100 square feet. Such sign shall not be located closer than 40 feet to any property line or 20 feet above ground level in the I-2 zoning district. Specifically, the applicant has requested a setback needing a relief variance of 39.79 feet from the property line. The front setback proposed is 0.21 feet and the front setback required is 40 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North End of Mass on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Vaughn.
Good evening, thank you. Brian Vaughn from Smolak &amp; Vaughn on behalf of the applicant. Some of you may recall that this is the old Beijing site, the old Hokkaido restaurant and we were before you, a few months back, to get variances, to reconstruct basically a new building in the same location. At that time, I think I did mention in my application that there was a chance we could be back for a sign variance, we weren't entirely sure, we thought that the sign may qualify as a pre-existing non-conforming sign and we did not yet have sign plans and for the applicant's timelines, we needed to proceed, so we weren't aware of it at the time. Basically, we're looking to reconstruct a new sign in almost the exact same location as the old sign. I will admit, it's a significant variance when you look at it in terms of, you know, percentage and, but maybe refreshing your memory, this particular site is a really odd situation because it is a lone industrial to site zoning to both sides of it and the rest of 125 is-
It's commercial.
-is general business or business. And in the signage provision of the bylaw, there is a particular provision applicable only to industrial, which creates the 40-foot setback. So, you know, I think there are a couple of things. One, it's going in precisely the same location where it is now. Secondly, it's very consistent with all of the other signage that's in the area and if this, if it were not for the fact that it's zoned I-2 where it probably shouldn't be, we wouldn't have the issue. Have to take any questions?
Here's my pickup with this. This is going to be daycare medical offices, right?
Yeah.
So, this isn't a situation of, oh, hey, if somebody's driving down the street, we want them to see our sign because we're a restaurant or some kind of retail store. If you're going to this location, it's because you've put it in your GPS and this is where you're going. This isn't a, I'm driving, I'm going to pull over real quick because I see a daycare or a medical office. I am concerned with basically the fact that it's like, it's a completely flat sign and it's wide.
I guess what I would say is that it's actually, given the size of it, it's also consistent with the other signs on 125. Because you're on 125 and there's a lot of traffic, you want better identification, you want a large sign.
But if you look where the Starbucks is, literally right past the set of lines, all of those buildings right there are all on the building. There is not a single one, there is no sign right there, right on 125.
I-
There is across the street, fully aware of that, but looking at the most current that has been built would be that development right there and every single one of those. And that has a nail salon, which in my opinion is more likely of, ooh, I need a pedicure or a liquor juncture, which is, again, to me, ooh, I need the bottle of wine before I head home.
I-
I don't see the need for this big of sign right there.
So, respectfully, I would disagree for a couple of reasons. One is when you're going, that's a destination location for a plaza where, you know, it's like, oh, the plaza by Starbucks or something, right? You know, people know where it is and because it's setback a little further, you maybe get a little bit of a better visual. When there is actually a provision in the signage by law, which specifically talks about on Route 125 allowing the building commissioner to make determinations for there to be larger signage, and it's in there because you're on a main road and traffic is traveling at faster rates and you want to be able to have good identification and see the business. But I guess, you know, as far as the size of it and everything else, it's consistent with the other signs and it's fully compliant with zoning. It's not, we're not looking for variance due to the size of the sign, it's the location of the sign.
It's the location of it and based off of what it looks like is why the location bothers me.
No.
Because I don't see this as a destination stop. I see this as, I Google daycares and I'm going to check this one out or this is where my kid goes every single day or this is where the, I don't need a sign for my kid's doctor's office, I know where it is.
You see, I disagree a little bit with that. I think that that kind of signage, people pass by that road every day and then their life changes, they need a new daycare, they say, oh, yeah, there was a daycare back there and they go look it up.
I also have a dentist in Wilmington who has, is in like a little shopping plaza that doesn't have a sign on the road and I miss the turn every single time and I'm, it's, I-
Guys are not on the minority.
I don't, I don't know that, like, I also have parents-in-law who don't use GPS, they only use paper maps. So, like, having a sign right up by the road is not, it's not obstructing anything, it's not making it hard to get out of a driveway, it doesn't look any bigger than any of the other signs, in fact, it looks much smaller than the Hokkaido sign that's there now.
I'm not worried about people crashing into-
Do you have a problem with the size or just the distance at all?
So, the Hokkaido sign though is, is still there technically, the structure of it, they took down the paneling.
Right.
See, I don't like how, listen, and I understand what I'm looking at when I'm seeing, you know, sidelines and so on and so forth, but if it was, it's going to probably bite me, if it was up on a pole a little bit so that when I'm sitting in my car, I'm not-
Wait, you want it to be higher?
I don't-
So, you look under it.
I don't like that you can't see under it, it's the same thing with Burger King. I didn't, I didn't like that line of sight issue.
As an aesthetic?
It's more of an aesthetic.
If the drive, if the driveways are close to it.
Sure.
I mean, like the boulders.
Yeah, so, there is, one of the, one of the plans that's included is a sightline sign. So, as part of the planning board process, and it's already been peer reviewed, they reviewed the sightlines. So, I think there was a minimum sightline requirement based on the engineering standards for 305 feet and I believe it was recommended at 445 feet and the actual sightline. It meets that, it actually meets actually the 605 feet.
And if we're talking about how things look, you know, coming from the Starbucks through the intersection, you can't see signage on the front of the buildings until you're right in front of the building going potentially 35, 40 miles an hour. You're gonna blow right past that, but, but again...
Same location.
I mean, it does look proportional as well.
Yeah.
And also, while it is right up on the edge of the property, it is not right up on the edge of the road, right? If it was right up on the edge of the road, I would be concerned about sightlines in that way.
Right.
But it is, and in fact, actually, I am more worried about it if it was on a stick and tall. I would, I am glad that it is not a repeat of what the Hokkaido sign was.
Right. Okay, except for, if you look at this line of sight thing that they did, I'm assuming this blue line is the line of sight, right?
That's the line of sight, correct.
Well, it sounds like that, it sounds like you just showed the line of the minimum that they requested, the 445, right?
No, 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 the 445, they showed it at the...
They asked for that, but it, in fact...
The minimum was 305, I believe.
But what you're saying is, in fact, you just represented the 445, but it is in fact longer than that.
Yes, in fact, the actual, I believe in the report, I believe it was roughly 600, but...
But do you see how close this line of sight is to where this proposed sign is? I mean, what is that in actual? I mean, because on the piece of paper, it obviously looks like centimeters.
How offset is it from that sign? Yeah.
I know, you don't have a number for me on that, do you?
How, how close it is from...
If you look at where the...
It's, it's, it's right on the edge of the property line, but it's where it is now, like it...
No, I'm talking with the line of sight.
If someone's pulling out, to pull out of that daycare and they don't pull quite up to the stop line in a parking lot and they look to the left, they're gonna see the sign. But if they pull up right to the stop line, then they, their vision just clears. It's a good long vision once you clear it, but you have to pull up far enough. There's not much cushion between the stop line. I think that's what you're saying, right?
Well, yeah, there's, there's not.
If you stop back here, then your line of vision goes right through it.
Right. I mean, if you stop at the actual spot where you're supposed to stop, right? This sign is right in your face. You're not seeing down.
Well, but it is also, at least in the mockups here, surrounded by landscaping and a fence that would also be obstructing the line of sight. In fact, obstructing it closer to the road, so if that's the only issue that we have.
But it's not obstructing because you're seeing through it.
When you're parallel to a fence, you're not seeing through it in the same way.
But you don't think you're gonna see a car, well, now you're gonna get me to turn around and say, get rid of the fence.
Is that part of what we're here to do? I'm just saying, I think you're gonna have to pull right up to 125 to get out no matter what.
I think, so, I just wanna be clear, so, because I think it gives me some comfort, but you said it was peer reviewed by what, other engineers?
Yeah, so, it was prepared by the NAS, our engineers, and it's in, in front of the planning board, so, I mean, they also, yes, it was continued because we're doing some additional water, starting out.
Water, oh.
In that case, continue it, continue it.
But no, it's, it's, it's still in front of the planning board. It was continued. But it is subject to two levels of engineering because it was the engineers that prepared it. It's being peer reviewed and then ultimately the planning board is reviewing that issue as well, so.
But we have an independent peer review engineering firm who has reviewed it and issued a report saying that it, sightlines are sufficient for these highway conditions and the speed of travel and whatnot.
Yep.
So long as you go past the stop.
Yeah, I know, I know, but it gets, I mean, but, well, those experts in the field versus us.
You wanna talk about people coming down roads super fast? Have you driven 125?
I think once or twice I may have.
Actually, earlier today, coming back from here.
But, but, no, I see your point. That's what I was going to also on the sightlines. I'm just saying, having professionals who know how to do the calculations and know what these codes are is a little bit more comforting than us, than our feeling.
Isn't that more about location and size? I mean, well, I mean, isn't, isn't the problem of sightlines more about location than size? Or you're saying, you know, make it hollow or, I mean, raise it up or...
I question that part of it.
I don't think you need the sign to begin with. I think the building would be fine. But I'm always open to compromise. I am not difficult. You know, he can...
This is the theme of the day.
You keep assuring people so much.
He can move it back.
Back where?
He can move it closer to the building.
No, that's where the lane of traffic is.
Yeah.
But, but not really because, I mean, you have this whole grassy area for one and two, I mean, the lane of traffic is only, hold on, lane of traffic is one way.
Further back.
Lane of traffic is one way in front of the building.
But there's a whole safety thing about the kids, drop-off, pickup and all that.
And a sign right in the way. And a sign right in the way.
But the engineers were back to different. And some, some of them, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but some would say that the, by blocking the view at that point is potentially more helpful because it avoids the people that are trying to look and then go through the stop sign and forces you to actually stop and look.
Why can't we make the bottom follow up?
Because no one in their right mind is gonna drive out into 125 traffic without looking.
Except for a mother in a rush to get home for dinner, no.
So you just mean instead of a plinth, have it be posts?
Don't like a sign, period. However, I am willing to compromise. I'm a compromising person. Why can't it be posts? Why does it have to be brick, completely blocking? Why can't it be, I mean, do we really need Learning Express to be so big? Can we make it so that you can...
It's learning experience. Learning Express is a toy store.
Sorry, learning experience. Is there, listen, you want something from us, I guess I ask, is there room for the applicant to compromise on their design?
Unfortunately, I don't have my client here with me and I cannot ask if there's like any particular, I mean, I do know that if they need enough space for all of the tenants that are gonna be in there.
Three tenants.
Yep, and I know that it's, it is fully compliant as far as, as far as the size. And, you know, I guess I should, I mean, if you care to see him, I don't know if you're familiar or not, I do have pictures of the signs for, you know, the next three properties along, which you can see, are, you're probably familiar with them, The Loft, Joe Fish, I think, Remitis or something right next door. Those are all right on the road as well.
Those are all raised signs that have just a post holding them up, I believe.
But, but we're talking, what we're talking about is, is location to the road. Well, we have engineering that says that the line of sight is fine. I mean, so, I would also say though that, and I didn't, I didn't raise this, but because I do think there's probably a little bit of a difference. But right around the corner on 25 Commerce Way, this board, two years ago I think it was, granted two variances for 25 Commerce Way to have two signs, I believe one of them was less than two feet from the road. That's right around the corner, so it's...
I remember. Isn't Commerce Way the little, the road that goes back?
Yeah, so if you, if you took it right after, yes.
With the car wash and then the...
Exactly.
So it's not a high traffic or...
But again, it's not, it's not a high traffic, but, you know...
Well, you're talking past the car wash.
The road right...
Bang it right after Joe Fish, if you go past it. And it's the next property down your right, okay? But it's also, that was an I-2 property. And so it's the exact same variance that you, but you granted two signs, one of them under two feet, so we're not that far out of the realm of, and as to it being, oh, well, that's a side road, I would argue that that's where you don't need the signage as much as you do on 125 where the traffic is traveling faster and you, you need to see it from a further distance away.
I would also argue that the line of sight... I would also argue that...
No, I just wanna be, I just, I just want my client to be treated fairly and consistently with other similarly situated parties.
I'm dealing with a location that is going to be primarily dominated by children right off of a main road with my two cents traffic pattern that isn't actually going to happen because I know what it is to be a parent with a daycare. So, I'm not trying to be unreasonable and I'm treating your client 100% the same exact way I would treat any other application.
I know you are.
But I am bothered in the sense that I understand what your client needs, but I'm sorry, when I look and there is a stop line, which legally is where you're supposed to stop and the line of sight is past that, I have issue with that because then it puts it right, right where the sign is. So, as much as the board disagrees with me on, I think it should just be on the building and it would be fine, wanting the sign, okay, but then where's the compromise in the sense of that aspect?
An alternate compromise direction, you can tell me if you think this is reasonable or not, is that given the way that sightline angles work, moving it even two feet further in would shift the angle quite a lot on the sightlines, right? It would move it from 14 feet in probably to something like 20 feet in. Does that change the math for you?
We'd have to move the side further down.
Well, no, go into the building. So, the grass has room, right? And if you moved it even a couple feet further inward inland on the grass, kept the same sign, you would open up, because of the way the ang, the extreme angle works, it actually opens up a lot of depth into the parking lot.
I mean, that's gonna come down to whether or not...
Unfortunately, what that ends up meaning is that then they have to redo the sightlines, right? And I know that that's no fun for your client.
Although, would they?
Because these ones would be minimum, they've got the minimum, anything after that, improvement.
They're gonna put a new base in, a new footing in and they're gonna do it all.
They're gonna get all that anyway.
I'm just asking, you don't...
I'm not getting snippity.
She's getting snippity.
I just better when it's directed at you.
Yeah, if you're gonna redo it all, I mean, and we kick it back two feet, does that impact you significantly if the sign gets kicked back to the building two feet?
I, that's not a question that I can answer. I gotta talk to the engineer because it is, it is pretty, it is pretty tight in there with the driveway and I'm not sure about what they have for utilities or any, anything else, so, I just can't.
I'm just trying to give you...
I would say it doesn't sound to me like it should be a big issue, but I just...
I'm just trying to give you a menu of options rather than a single choice to work from.
So, on this plan, it says the existing sight sign on a brick base. So that's talking about Hokkaido sign.
Yes.
Right.
Because in reference to that, it looks like there's plenty of room to move it back towards the building.
Well, it's a wider sign.
I think the base on the new, on the new sign is, was wider.
Nine feet, yeah.
And the Hokkaido one's maybe three feet.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I swear, at almost 10 o'clock, I'm not trying to be difficult.
You're not trying to be difficult. You're just being difficult.
One could also argue that the line of sight that we're concerned about being obstructed has a stoplight that's like right there.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, the one that's right by the Starbucks.
Yeah, that's a full intersection. You realize that that turns green and it's, that turns yellow and it's...
What I'm saying is, is you do get significant periods of time where you get a reprieve from any traffic coming from that direction. It is, it's not like, it's just like unimpeded traffic as far as the eye can see is all I'm trying to say.
Not like Salem Street.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, listen, they could just move that driveway.
I mean, moving that driveway, I know, we're not...
Okay. You're not gonna be held up by us anyway because you're still dealing with planning, right?
I'm still dealing with planning and conservation, so...
Okay, so you're still dealing with multiple other, multiple other...
Yeah, we're supposed to be, I think, next week back in front of planning. Technically, technically could hold us up a little bit, I suppose, but if you're asking me if I would continue and take it back to my client and see if they could...
You have choices, right? I'm a woman of compromise. You can talk to your client about changing the sign a little bit to make the line of sight better, moving it back, putting it on the building.
But there will be also on the building regardless.
I know. You can continue until next month or we can...
Or I have to risk.
Or we can close it and you figure out whether or not I really am the minority in the group. Or if I am convincing enough, if I am convincing enough, because I will have them all to myself. No, I'm just...
Is it a lit sign? Could it be illuminated?
No.
No, no.
No.
It says a waterproof spotlight.
That'd be a whole nother fight.
It'll be, I think there might be ground lighting, uplighting it.
Not anything requiring zoning.
We're not doing interior illuminated lights here. Daycare and medical offices are closed at night. We don't need to light them up. You can take your shot with the board.
I, I would...
It's up to you.
I would say that, I would venture a guess if I said, now we wanna go forward. I would venture a guess I might still get a 4-1 decision, but because I don't think it is going to, to impact our timeline.
You wanna get on my good side, huh?
I, I'm happy to bring it back. I can't guarantee you that...
Talk to them.
I can't guarantee you that it's, it's gonna change, but just, yeah.
Be on firmer ground.
He wants to be, he wants to be as compromising as you.
I'm a woman of compromise. It is up to you. I mean, one, you know how it works, once we close, you know, I can use my powers of persuasion and manipulation and whatever else I can get from this board at almost 10 o'clock at night. All I'm looking for is the opportunity for your client to possibly have a area of compromise.
I will, I will continue again.
No pressure?
Can't, I can't...
No promises.
Can't guarantee that I'm gonna come back with anything that's changed, but...
Understood.
I'll review it with them and we'll be back.
I appreciate it. No pressure though.
How does the water work next week? Would we go up Salem Street then or can we...
Okay, so... This is what I will do because I think next meeting is going to more or less be, hey, I've got something different, or sorry, we are where we are, right? I mean, there's not...
Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't know enough. I could, they could, they could say, this is programmatic requirements. We do this with all of our, you know, whatever, right? I mean, it's like trying to change a Duncan sign, good luck, right? So...
If there were to be agreed upon type of changes, right? Like they're willing to change how it looks. My assumption would be that there is a possibility that Jen would get something before the next meeting. I do have a feeling though, your next hearing would be kind of short and sweet because like I say, it's either gonna be you saying, nope, sorry, it is what it is, or here's what we're willing to compromise on. There's not really gonna need to be much more discussion and banter.
Yep. Yep.
So I would pull, you can like me now, I would put Attorney Vaughn's ahead of three thirty-five.
Yeah, just so you're not sitting through the whole thing, but you did say short and sweet, not short and sour.
Attorney Vaughn likes...
All right, likes sweets, okay, I get it.
I mean, does that make sense?
That, yep.
I think three thirty-five, unless you wanna stick around for, you're more than welcome to.
I might, I mean...
Bring some popcorn?
It was some...
Interesting things, right?
Bottle of wine from Liquor Junction.
That does not have a sign. Okay, so we will do that, I will put you first on the list for next month. I appreciate you going to your client and asking.
Okay.
Okay, hold on, can I have a motion?
I move that we continue this item until October eighth.
And I second, oh, wait, I can't second, someone else can.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are done, can I have a motion? So Attorney Vaughn, we will see you October eighth, I will be getting...
Do you want me to sign that?
A waiver, yes.
Okay.
I will be getting back from Disney, so I will be nice and tired.
Yeah, I'm on record, so don't get anywhere, okay? Thank you.
Can I have, have a good night, Attorney Vaughn. Can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are...